Regular meeting for the Putnam County School Board on Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, is now in session. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Bud McGinnis and our invocation by Ms. Sandy Gilyard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of your Son, Jesus, we come this evening, God. We come calling upon your name because we know that there is no other name. And so we ask you right now, God, that you will be with us in this meeting, that you will guide our hearts, our thoughts, and our minds. God, bring to our remembrance our reason for being here, that we will always remember that it's our children first, that we would do the very best that we can to educate them the best that we can, and we lift up all of our employees. But we realize, God, it takes all of us, the entire village, to raise the child. And now, God, we lift up the Cook family, and we pray, God, for your strength in their weakness. For God, you declared that you would put no more on us than we could bear. And so, God, help us to be a strength one for the other. And now, God, have your way, and we'll be careful to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
We'll now have a presentation on the strategic plan by Laura France.
Good afternoon, Board. How are you doing?
Good.
Good, thank you.
Today, under new business, there is a timeline for the strategic plan. And before we give that to you during new business, we kind of want to give a little bit of a history as to why we want to embark on this new venture. Just a little bit of a history about where we were with our strategic plan in 2014. The school board actually created a one-pager. Some of you might remember that. There were three different workshops the board went through, and then we actually adopted it the beginning of August in 2014. In 2018, we had performance targets that we added, and we also went through our district accreditation review with SACS, Advanced Ed, and now it's Cognia. We'll be doing that probably in another four years. In 2019, the superintendent's strategic goals were incorporated into the plan that was developed by the board in 2014, and we published a booklet for everyone so that was very clear about what those targets were. It's kind of a little bit of a history, but building on the successes of the district that we've had so far, we would like to take the school improvements that we've done over the last few years and update our vision and our goals and plan for our future successes. And so, the new strategic plan that we would like to embark on is going to prepare, instead of having a single graduation initiative piece about it, it's going to prepare our students to be college and career-ready, students for post-secondary success. That would be kind of our overall arching goal towards the end. And we'd like to include the community with input and create working groups throughout the process that will ensure that more voices are heard and have say in what the future actions of the school district will be. So we're going to introduce, this is our new little logo for the next couple of months, the shaping of the future. So you'll be seeing this on lots of things. I gave you some cards in front of you to pass out to your friends or to anybody that you know that they can use those to actually help us with getting some feedback. So that's our new logo. You're going to be seeing it for a couple of months now. Thank Felicia for that. So today, under new business, you have a timeline that's posted for you to consider and approve. In May, it concludes with a new strategic plan for approval. It includes opportunities, not that the board has to come up with the strategic plan itself, but it will include opportunities where the board participates with the community service teams and the working groups to help deliver what that plan looks like. It's a building with several groups together. The district team, monthly, when you look at that timeline, provides frequent updates as to what all the working groups are doing and where we are in process. So today, when you are looking at new business, we're going to be talking about this timeline, and this is kind of how we will be updating you and what each time, each month, what the focus is. Today begins the two weeks that we're going to actually gather input from parents, students, district employees, business owners, and community members. And that is, what you have in front of you is a QR code on the back of that, and I left the other sheet on my desk. I'll go back and get it in a little bit. But if you just take that QR code and click it, you know, take a picture of it, you'll go through some perception data that we're trying to get some information on. We will send that out to groups of students, our parents through email, our employees through email. It will be posted on our website today. We will send it through the chamber by the end of the week, and we are trying to get as many community members, stakeholders, to respond to give us some idea of what the priorities should be over the next couple of years. The survey does close on December 15th. It's a very short timeframe, so we're going to kind of blitz everybody for the next two weeks to get that in. And the survey link is posted on the website, and it's going to be shared. I just talked to you about a lot of different ways we're going to share it. We actually have an administrator meeting tomorrow where we have a call of action where each school will talk, will commit to how they will be sharing it throughout their community as well. So we're really excited about this new venture. Do you have any questions about the update and the working of the new strategic plan?
Nope.
So, all you have to do is take a picture, picture of this, and then it will come up on your phone.
For you to take. It's also have a link on the front page of the, of the district website for you to click and do a link.
You don't even have to take the picture. You just open your camera and place it over the QR code.
And it comes up.
And then a pop-up will pop up, and you click on the pop-up, and it takes you to it.
Lot of menus.
That's really cool.
And there's a part, at the very end, it asks demographic information. You'll notice it's separated by like zip codes so that we can get down to, if you want to determine, like, what does your area feel are the priorities? We can cycle through some of that information. And then we'll ask for if people would like to continue to help give feedback. They'll leave their email address, and we'll be sending more in-depth surveys throughout the time
Perfect.
as needed.
Sounds great to me.
That's really a neat way to gather community input, probably from those who are not total stakeholders like a teacher would be. And, you know, it's going to really help as far as us moving along to decide with some of the goals the superintendent and Mr. Bowling have spoken to me about. So I think it's wonderful.
And I think that you'll probably see when you go through the survey, you'll see some of those things listed as well to get some feedback from the community at large. Tomorrow, the administrators actually will sit down and take it at our meeting, and then we'll decide which ages of students, what grade levels to send it to, what is it most appropriate for to get feedback from those groups of students as well.
The coach in me says there should be some sort of competition percentages among areas.
Among schools or?
It's anonymous, so we wouldn't be able to tell.
Yeah, the competition's going to be how we
From the demographic.
How we figure out how to proceed with it.
That's right.
Laura, just for clarification, if someone doesn't have access to this, there is a link on the website.
There'll be a link on the website when we send out the emails. They'll actually, they won't have the QR code to the email. The email will actually be the link right to the Google form.
Very good.
Rick, I'd suggest, and this is just a suggestion, that maybe with some of the things that, that you guys have touched on over the last couple of years that we know that we've got to start looking at, that maybe you, you, you or Felicia or Ms. France maybe get with the paper and do a guest column or something and advise them of that, that we're looking because we've got, everything's changed with this pandemic, and it's just, there's going to have to be things that, that, I just, people just need to know.
Right, the more we can make them aware.
The more we can bring them into the process, the absolute better it's going to be in this situation.
I agree.
It's not going to get any better unless we get community help.
Yeah, and I think, and I want to thank Ms. France and her staff, especially Jonathan Hinke, who has really spent a lot of time developing this. And, you know, we actually started this process before the pandemic.
Yes.
You know, when we did all the little community groups, and, and y'all did it too, where we did the little activity, avid activity about what a post-secondary graduate looks like.
Graduate looks like, yeah.
So that's kind of where we're looking at going, but we need a lot of input, which is what this is going to provide. And, and then that whole timeline is going to really, it's going to go pretty fast, but it's going to be real important work, and it's going to guide what we do for the next five years, so.
I realize the circulation of the newspapers not is enormous as everyone, but the people that are really involved do read the paper. Maybe, maybe talk to, about a guest column or something and just explain where we're going to need help.
I actually talked to Nick earlier today, and, you know, we want to, you know, work with them closely and see how we can help push the word out.
Okay, because we can't do it without them either.
Laura, you said the accreditation review, we had it in 2018. Is that going to be four years from 2018 or?
It's usually five years. When we did our accreditation review, SACS had been changed to Advanced Ed, and it's now moved into another group called Cognia. They're redoing their standards.
They're changing.
So I don't have the standards to look at to help guide that process, but I do know that your strategic plan and the process in which you involve stakeholders to come up with what your goals are will be a strong theme through, no matter what accreditation company you're using. But I don't have their actual new standards. They're rewriting them.
Thank you, Ms. France.
Welcome.
And she'll be available when this comes back up for discussion and input action. Ms. France will be here to answer more questions if you need to.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? No? Okay, so we'll move to the public hearing? Do I need to read each one of these?
Yes, ma'am.
And then?
Yeah, this will be a roll call vote.
Okay. So item number one, adoption of new policy number 7544, use of social media.
There'll be a motion.
I make a motion that we approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion.
Roll call vote, Mr.?
District one?
Adopt.
Adopt. Is it adopt?
Adopt.
Adopt, okay.
District three?
District three?
Oh, you know what? I'm district three. I moved seats and I thought I moved history.
He thought we were starting with.
You can move mountains.
Heel kick, heel kick, charge. Okay.
Uh, district one?
All right, adopt for, for two, three.
And adopt for, for two.
And adopt for one.
All right, then, district four?
Adopt.
District five?
Adopt. Is this the?
So motion carries?
Yes.
Five, zero. Item number two, amendment to policy number 6550, authorized travel expenses.
I'll make a motion that we adopt policy 6550.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Crawford and a second by Mr. McGinnis.
All right, district one?
Yes.
District two?
Amend.
District three?
Amend.
District four?
Amend.
District five?
Amend.
Motion carries?
Okay.
Five, zero. Do you, do I need to read each one of them?
You don't have to read the title.
I do?
Yes.
I thought the person making the motion did. It doesn't matter. They go ahead.
Uh, number, item number three, amendment to policy 7530.02, staff use of wireless communication devices.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the policy.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Gilyard.
District one?
Amend.
District two?
Amend.
District three?
Amend.
District four?
Amend.
District five?
Amend.
Motion carries five, zero. Item number four, amendment to policy 7540, technology.
I'll make a motion that we amend policy 7540.
Second it.
Motion by Ms. Jane Crawford, a second by Mr. Bud McGinnis.
District one?
Amend.
District two?
Amend.
District three?
Amend.
District four?
Amend.
District five?
Amend.
Motion carries five, zero. Item number five, amendment to policy 7540.02, district web page.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we amend policy number 7540 dash, I mean, dot zero two, district webpage.
And I second that motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Sandy Gilyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one?
Amend.
District two?
Amend.
District three?
Amend.
District four?
Amend.
District five?
Amend.
Motion carries five, zero. Item number six, amendment to policy 7540.04, staff technology, acceptable use, and safety.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we amend this policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandy Gilyard.
All right, district one?
Amend.
District two?
Amend.
District three?
Amend.
District four?
Amend.
District five?
Amend.
Motion carries five, zero. Item number seven, amendment to policy 8315, information management.
Madam Chair, I offer a motion that we amend policy number 8315, information management.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Sandy Gilyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles.
District one?
Amend.
District two?
Amend.
District three?
Amend.
District four?
Amend.
District five?
Amend.
Motion carries five, zero. Now we'll move to item E, items approved by the superintendent under emergency powers. Item number one is Florida Blue Enrollment Summary.
I make a motion that we approve Florida Blue Enrollment Summary under emergency powers.
Second.
Got a motion, I'll second it.
We have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Ms. Sandy Gilyard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Item number two, Florida Blue Employer Application.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We approve Florida Blue Employer Application.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandy Gilyard. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Now we move to our consent agenda. Ms. Gilyard, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
G seven, just, just for point of clarification.
G seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything, anything else?
That was, that was it. Yes, ma'am, G seven, that's it.
Okay, Mr. Buckles, would you like to pull anything?
I'm comfortable. I've had enough contact with Assistant Superintendent and Mr. Cersey. I feel good.
And Mr. McGinnis, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
I have nothing to pull.
Okay, Ms. Crawford?
Just H two. Was waiting to hear back whether or not I should recuse myself on that vote because of the landowner. I should. Okay.
You're the landowner?
So, no, because of who the landowner is. I'm not the landowner. H two.
Okay, so we're going to pull G seven and H two. Okay, do I have a motion to?
Hold on a minute. All she's going to do is recuse herself from voting on this. Is that correct?
On H two, so.
So we don't have to pull it?
That's fine.
Okay.
Right?
But I, I have to.
Is that not correct, Charlie?
You don't have to pull it.
Yeah, okay.
I, I mean, I wouldn't think you'd have to pull it. She just.
So I'm vote, how am I going to vote?
You just recuse yourself from voting.
So you just don't vote?
On that, on that item, Charlie can tell you.
But the item has, is, is locked in with the rest of them.
You can recuse yourself. You've already publicly stated you're not going to vote either way because of your relationship. Well.
But if it's in the hole of the consent agenda.
It's not a problem. It's, it's not a big deal. You've already recused yourself.
So what you, if you is vote on the consent agenda for everything other than H two, have a vote for that in which Board Member Crawford could vote.
That's correct.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Test for H two in which Board Member Crawford would not participate in a vote.
Okay.
You want me to amend it and make a motion?
Well, have you pulled?
We don't have any.
We don't have a.
That's full of shit. Okay, she just announced she was going, okay.
Would, item G seven has already been requested to be pulled.
Okay.
So the proper order now would be to consider G seven or any other items that any other board member could vote.
We haven't voted on the consent agenda yet.
You're talking about H two, is that right, Jane? H two? All right, Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus G seven and H two.
Second it.
Okay, Mr. Buckles has made a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus G seven.
Seven and H two.
No. And then there's a separate motion for H two, minus G seven.
And H two, you have to pull out.
And H two.
And H two.
And then we're going to make a separate.
Right.
Okay. And who was the second?
Me.
Mr. McGinnis was the second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Now we'll go to.
Okay, now, G?
Seven.
Seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ms. Gilyard?
I just wanted to, and I do apologize, my every intention was to ask my questions early this morning. It's in regards to the job description for the coordinator of Student Support Services, and I did print the job description. Is this person already in place or is this position going to be advertised? How is this being done?
I've been through your same problem, Jane, a lot of times.
That job description is actually under item K one, under Personnel Matters?
Yes, yes. Oh, I see what I did.
And you pulled G seven. But I can speak to that if you would like.
Mm-hmm. What, what happened when I first asked the question as I went through the agenda? And then I went back and wrote myself a note. I printed it because I did find it over there on the other side and looked at it. Yes.
Just explain it.
So the, the job description is for Coordinator of Student Services. Is that the correct name of it?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Um, it is a job that we wrote, or a position that we wrote into CARES funding when we wrote CARES way back in the summer. We did our data chats with the principals at the end, like at the beginning of November, to figure out where they are with some data concerns with our students in option two, students trying to come back and forth, people who are not being very successful. And now that we know where they need some support, we would like to have that position paid for out of CARES to help support students who are not being successful in the innovative method, option two. And actually, it's very timely because yesterday the state did an emergency order in which we're going to have to progress monitor those students a little bit more, and that person can help with getting those students the correct services they need to, to be successful or to transitioning them back to brick and mortar.
Okay, so the person has already been?
We do not have a person currently in that position. The position is written and paid for out of CARES. We had to write the job description, and we would maybe be moving someone into that position from a different position to cover out of CARES for the remainder of the year.
So like a lateral movement and not, okay.
We don't look, we, we are very cautious in hiring anyone. We might be making moves to help us better support our students with the funding sources we have.
All right, thank you. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept item G seven, even though the job description was over in the other, on the, on the personnel matters.
I second that.
Okay, Ms. Gilyard made a, a motion that we approve item G seven, and Mr. Buckles seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Now I need a motion for H two.
Madam Chairman, I, well, I'd have to come from, well, Jane didn't pull it. I pulled it, didn't I?
I pulled it originally.
Well, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, Charlie, help me here, we approve H two. And, you know, we just approve H two. That's all I have to say. Yeah, okay.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. David Buckles made a, a motion that we accept item H two, and Mr. McGinnis seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four, zero. Okay, we have no emergency business. We have no unfinished business. Now we're on item O, discussion new business, and item number one, discussion, input, and action timeline for development of strategic plan.
I make a motion. Do we, do we discuss first?
You, you make a motion and a second, and then you discuss.
I make a motion that we accept the timeline for development of the strategic plan as presented.
I second it.
Okay, there's been a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford that we accept the timeline for the development of the strategic, goodness, strategic plan, and seconded by Mr. David Buckles. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Item number two, discussion, input, and action, resolution granting emergency powers to the superintendent.
Madam Chairman, as I have done pretty much every time, I think it is absolutely 100% the best route to go to continue to grant emergency powers in the face of the COVID crisis that we're dealing with and are, you know, dealing with everything from trying to have, offer retirement outs for people in case we don't have enough students, continue to show and, and to support where we are. So Superintendent, it, I, I just would make a motion that we approve this and give him the power he needs to act on our behalf, and he'll contact us if he makes a decision.
Okay, there's been a motion by Mr. David Buckles that we approve the resolution granting emergency powers to the superintendent. It was seconded by Mr. Bud McGinnis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Item three, discussion, input, and action, Putnam County School District Teacher Salary Increase Allocation.
You guys want some initial background information on this?
I would like some.
Okay. All right, so if you remember, before the last legislative session, the governor vowed to raise the starting salaries for teachers in the state of Florida. So he put it, he set aside a pot of money, and he divvied it up among all the districts, and each district got their allocation. But it came with some rules, and the rules is, is what has been holding all the districts up, you know, before getting this passed. At our last negotiating session, we were able to come to an agreement. So the rules are simply 80% of this money that was set aside for us has to be used to bring the starting teacher salaries as close to 47.5 as you can get them. That's one, one rule. Another key rule is it has to be full-time classroom teachers. So there's 80% of this pot of money, according to the rules that were kind of written in, into this, had to be used for that purpose. The other 20% could be used to also help in that endeavor, or be used for non-classroom teachers, or all of this, teachers who are already making above 47.5. So the other 20% had some room for negotiations and, and figuring out things. So essentially, according to those rules, you divide all of your teachers, and in our case, it was steps zero through eight teachers who were making below 47.5. Those classroom teachers into that pot of money, how closely can you get to that? That gives you your new starting salary. So most districts did not get to 47.5. Some districts were lucky enough to already be there or very close, and then they could renegotiate all of that money the way they wanted to. But with us, because our starting salary was below Uh, but with us, uh, because our starting salary was below forty thousand, I think it was thirty-nine and some change, it didn't get us quite there. So here's, here's what we did. Um, we came up with a starting salary of forty-five thousand, one hundred forty-two for our teachers. Um, and that was the full-time classroom teachers, but we didn't wanna have two salary schedules, because we have lots of teachers who spend part of their day in a classroom and other part in a dean's office. We have guidance counselors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can understand the turmoil in having two salary schedules. So we, uh, decided that we would have one instructional salary schedule like we've always had. But that, in order to accomplish that, we had to kick in some extra money. We also decided to, um, kick in just a little bit more money and give everyone who was above step eight, um, uh, twelve hundred dollars. So, everybody is getting from zero to eight, forty-five thousand, one forty-two. And then everyone above that is getting twelve hundred and their steps that they were getting already. And the steps are like eight hundred and ninety-five dollars a year. So they're getting that twelve hundred dollars plus their eight ninety-five. So those are the advantages for the people who are above eight years.
Twelve hundred plus steps?
Plus steps, yes, ma'am. And so the, the difference, that cost difference was outside of the TSIA, the, the, uh, the set aside. The district had to contribute one, contribute one hundred eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars to make this work. And so that is where we ended, that's what we, um, finally rested our hat on. And as soon as you guys, or if you guys approve it, uh, it'll be electronically sent to DOE, and we expect a pretty quick, pretty quick turnaround. Of course, this will be retroactive to July first, twenty twenty, and, uh, and teachers can get a, um, a retro check, and no, it won't happen before Christmas.
Oh, so it'll be a great Christmas gift.
And you and Mark have been in close contact.
We, this was negotiated, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they probably did that together.
I, I tell you what.
I make a motion we approve it.
I look at this, man, some work, some thought, some heart. This, if this doesn't say, uh, I care, or we care, uh, I don't know what does, and the way you even broke it down with how many teachers fall in that category.
Starting salary.
A lot of work, and, and.
Six hundred dollars.
I appreciate it, and I know the rest of us as well, appreciate the work.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
Took a lot smarter minds than I have to.
Well, I did all, I did all the math, um, and I'm kidding.
No, I have a feeling.
Now, Mark had some innovative solutions as well, um, some creative.
I know what kind of mind Mark has. And I know they're gonna be pleased, I just know it, that they're gonna be pleased.
Especially not to have two salary schedules.
Oh, that would've been a nightmare. Rondin' them too.
Got a motion on the floor.
Okay, I believe Mr. Buckles has a motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the Putnam County School District Teacher Salary Increase Allocation, and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Now we'll move to the board reports by board members, the board attorney and the superintendent, and I'll start with, um, you, Mr. McGinnis.
Okay. Well.
Uh. It's funny, laugh.
They, uh, I'm, I'm really glad that we don't have two salaries. I experienced that, um, after six years in the postal service, um, not knowing exactly where we were gonna be, if I was gonna have a thirty-year career or what. And, uh, after six years, it was not only two different salaries, it was two different retirements. So, uh, hats off to the school district for having one. It creates a lot of animosity, and it's just, you don't wanna be there when you're having two different people pay differently. The strategic plan, it looks awesome, uh, hope we can get, moving on with that, this is a great idea, the card thing. I did attend the FSBA webinar just recently with, uh, it was about resiliency, safety and alternative funding, very enlightening. Kind of gave a school board member kind of a heads up about, uh, what to go and look for, about, um, your capital improvements and such. I did have the opportunity, I guess I got some miscommunication, I attended the J F G, J I G, J A G interduct, induction, uh, in person. And I think they thought I was gonna be online, but it was all good, and it was well-attended. The people there, the young people were excited, and it was wonderful to see them inducted into middle school.
Where was it?
At Price. And, uh, the one that, uh, was at Jenkins, uh, I, I tried to do that virtually, but I, I don't know if I did the link right or what, but it was very well, it was good, and I'm excited for them, a lot of them. You got to talk with them and, um, just briefly, and, um, they, you know, it's, it's a great program, especially in our middle schools. I did enjoy judging the chili cook-off.
I didn't miss it.
Didn't want to miss that, that was the same day.
Who won?
I don't know. They were all good.
Oh, everybody. Everybody was a winner.
Sarah Jean won.
Oh, did she?
And, um, I've been enjoying the virtual open houses on the Facebook pages of the schools. And, um, I just wanna let everybody know today, I'm, I'm getting dinner at Zaxby's, Feed the Knee is having a Tuesday fundraiser. And the money's, uh, the J F G and J A G, I think is, um, are helping with that too. Uh, the money's gonna be used to supply the pantry food items for Putnam County families who are with food insecurities. And, uh, if you're heading out west, State Road twenty, we have a major traffic shift on the four lane, just be careful. Um, this, uh, big shout-out to our dashboard on our website, I noticed that's new. A lot of other districts are doing that, where we have individual schools, I don't know when that changed, I don't look at it daily, but.
This week.
It did this week?
Mm-hmm.
I was right on it then, huh? And, uh, I'm just still, uh, just thankful what our district has done in the way of getting our young people back in school safe and our teachers securely. I know, uh, a lot of states are having a lot of issues, I won't name them right now, but, um, it'd be ridiculous to, I would be ridiculous to comment, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Ms. Crawford?
Well, um, I'm happy to know that spelling bee season is upon us once again, and I'm looking forward to moderating the spelling bee at CLO in the next couple of weeks. That's always fun to do. I learned, I found out so much good stuff on our website today. It's not that I haven't been there before, but I never had time to really look, but, um, I'm thrilled that the flu vac, vaccine is being offered, uh, for all of our students, um, free of charge, and I hope parents will take advantage of it. Uh, I also found out that midterm progress reports are coming out tomorrow, so there's either gonna be a lot of kids crying, or a lot of kids happy. And also on the website, I've, uh, had seen a couple of videos, but there's some great videos on, uh, we have a local star among us in some of them, uh, our superintendent. But campus security and the SOAR learning project and the new teacher mentor program, um, they're all really good and really informative, and I hope the community is, is watching those. Job well done on that. Um, and the last thing I wanna say, and y'all had to know this aggravated the stew out of me, um, in the li, in light of our governor's apparent lack of concern for our students and teachers, and ultimately their families in regard to COVID, uh, I pray that our school system will continue, uh, to stay vigilant, uh, with our safety protocols for, and, in all of our schools. This is not the time to become complacent.
No.
Uh, even though Governor DeSantis stated yesterday that closing public schools during the coronavirus was the biggest public health blunder in modern history. Well, I don't agree, not that anybody cares, because we absolutely had to close for the safety of our students and our employees, and also to prepare our schools so that we could reopen. And, uh, I just, you know, I'm still concerned, it's not over, uh, it's not going to be over soon, and we've just got to stay vigilant. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. I tend to agree with you.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Gilliard?
You skipping Mr. Buckles.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Buckles.
I'm here. I, I echo some, some of what Jane says, and, and, I mean, there's, there's really no right or wrong answer. You do the best you can, and that's all you can do, and you pray, and like you guys have done, and, and I've, I've said this repeatedly, I've never been a part of a school board yet that was as vigilant, uh, about your, your creator and the, and the protection that our students and schools and teachers and employees get as you guys have been, and I'm honored to have been a part of, of your board. But, uh, mine, a little different. You can't be complacent on that, but at the same time, as we move forward, the strategic plan is gonna be, gonna be probably the most important thing that, that we're going to embark on for the next decade, or maybe the next twenty years. People really don't understand that right now, but, I mean, COVID has taken the, the limelight, but we've got everything from anything that we knew that we, we have to add on or build, it's gonna be done with the strictest of, up to hurricane standards, and safety and security is, is number one. Any, anything we do is gonna be tied to that, and ultimately, I mean, I can see writing on the wall that, that's coming. I know that, I know that some of you do as well, and, uh, we're gonna have some tough changes and, and choices to make. But that'll come soon enough, that's why the strategic plan and getting that out to explain to the public why we want their, their thoughts and feelings is so important. We're, we're very fortunate to have the college, uh, local college as an ally on workforce development, but, uh, we need to hear more from our stakeholders and, and, you know, we're, we're building a community for our, our kids and grandkids, and a lot of things have gone undone in this county, and and it's not because of strictly the school district, but we've got other municipalities that we have to work with as well to try to build together for a better future. And I, I'm not gonna go into any more detail, other than I think Superintendent and his staff have a real good sense of what the future holds and where we're gonna have to go, and we'll all be more educated as time goes on. With that, I'd like to wish everybody safe and happy Christmas time, and hope we get through this holiday, and my heart just absolutely has been crushed today as we have lost another wonderful employee down in South Putnam. And I just pray for the people that loved him and his students and, and families that they can get through this okay. It's just part of what we do, is we lose people, and it just happens, and, and we have to do the best we can, so. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence.
I wish.
For the Cook family. Ms. Gilliard, would you like to say a few words about that?
I was just gonna dovetail, um, you, you talked about the students and the lives they touched, and, and the young lady, she came before us with weightlifting. Remember, he was taking her? She showed up today. When she got the word, she showed up. And so that's the business we're in. We, it's, it's not about the money, the raise is great, it is, and it will help out with a whole lot of things. But the people that are in it, they're in it for our children, and they impact lives, uh, day in and day out, and touch kids you, you wouldn't even know. Had my nephew to call all the way from, uh, West Virginia, because he had a stint with, with the coach and, and heard about it, and so it helps the family. And we do, we live in a district that, that honestly shows that they care, because, uh, Crescent City High, they had the people there, and of course, Ms. Holly is gonna be there. She's the face of that school, and, uh, Miller sent people there to support, and these are the things that, that makes the difference. It's, it's one thing for us to sit and say something, but when we do, it, it makes a difference, and so, uh, I, I just had written down just two things, um. Holidays are hard on families.
Absolutely.
For the first, when you're going through your first, and, and so we are still reeling from our first Thanksgiving, but it's because of people that care that gotta call and say something. And then I was going through trying to get myself recertified, and I stumbled on the superintendent's Thanksgiving message, and, and it was uplifting.
Yeah, it was.
Those are the things, and so people may get angry with us and say things, but when they have time to simmer down, and they see that we honestly care. I sat in on my first, uh, expulsion, uh, hearing, and didn't know anything, you know, I, I didn't know I was gonna be chairing it, I thought I was done with chairs.
Oh, you got to share it?
Yeah, you have to sign that thing, but anyway, long story short, just listening to Randy and how he met with the mother and the representative, it, 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 it says something about us, and that's, that's why we do what we do, because we, we care, and so, uh, enough said, again, and I appreciate what Mr. Buckles said regarding the moment of silence. All of that helps.
I know Holly would probably have done this under her speech, so if you'll call for a moment of silence and remember the Cook family, we would.
Yes.
Yes, um, if we could just take a moment of silence to remember a, an extremely kind and extremely gentle young man, he was a young man, and, um, touched so many lives and molded so many young people into young men and women. So if we could just take, take a moment and think about Stacy Cook and his family. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, I went to the J F G induction at Crescent City High School, and it was, um, Ms. Glover's doing a wonderful job. She stepped in, um, to fill a void when needed, and, um, I'm hurt, it's a loss for Miller because she taught class at school there. But, um, she's taken over the J F G program, and I think it's in very good hands. Her son, one of my former students, was the keynote speaker, and it was really, really good. And when Ms. Moats says it's really, really good, and did, does he have a tape of it? I mean, it was really good, and, um, he did make a, it was a PowerPoint presentation, and, um, I looked at Ms. Glover because, and I taught her too, and it was just a, a, I was a real proud moment. You know, I was like, wow, two great Putnam County students, and so it was, it was really, um, wonderful, and, um, I think it's information that the kids really heard, and I think they'll really use it. It's a great program. Basketball, soccer, girls' weightlifting, um, up and running. I also enjoyed doing the chili, uh, cook-off. I, I ate something from all, and I can't imagine what the winner, I mean, which one, one, two, three, which one was hers?
It was kind of like a pink color.
Oh, yes, I got seconds on that one. Yep, that was good. Felicia's was very good too, very good. In fact, on my tally sheet, there was only one point between anybody. But we weren't the only judges, Mr. McGinnis and I, there were a lot of maintenance men. And, uh, Crescent City, the yacht club is sponsoring the fireworks, the Christmas fireworks. And, um, they, they shoot them out near Three Bananas, and people obviously usually congregate down there, but there's so many opportunities to look out over the lake, anywhere along the road, and so, um, so if anyone wants to come, it's Saturday night. Um, I think it'll be around six o'clock, and, um, I'm sure it's face masks and social distancing, but it's outside, and so it gives a little bit of sense of normalcy to us. And, um, I do thank the district for the vision. And I do thank the district for the vision for our future, even when we could be saying woe is me, and, but we're continuing, we're heading on, and I just appreciate the leadership from the district staff and from the superintendent. It's really good to be a part of that. And with that, Mr. Douglas?
We are continuing to monitor the executive orders and direction from the Department of Education regarding school reopening and how other districts are continuing to be flexible and adaptable against our ever-changing rules. And I'll continue to work with the district administration and staff, make sure, thank you to Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Dr. Searcy?
Hey, thank you. Again, I want to give my condolences to the Cook family, that was quite a blow for us today, and just the entire Crescent City community, and all they've had to deal with over the last couple of years has been unbelievable. Also want to point out, just a condolences to Mary Beth Hestrom and her family, she lost her dad today. Just keep her, Randy, in your prayers, and that was a sudden illness, Mr. Trump, Bob Trump, so that was a definite blow there. The attorney spoke about the executive order, we are working on that. Ms. France and her team is working on developing the assurances that are required to turn in our plan by December 15th, and we will bring that to you for approval at the 15th meeting. So we'll have all that explained to you at that time, but we want to make sure that we are, you know, following all those expectations and before we send it off to the state. The strategic plan, again, thank you for approving the timeline, that's something we've been talking about for some time. And, you know, the way I look at it, our district, and I'm talking about everybody here, has made some tremendous gains from our graduation rate to, you know, getting out of turnaround status and, you know, giving our employees raises. I mean, across the board, we've done a number of things as a district that we should all be proud of. But this strategic plan, this is very important because this is the next step, and I want to look at this as, this is a step for us to be great, okay? We've gone from, you know, several years ago being kind of in the bottom of all the districts, now we've made some significant gains. Now the next step is, this is what's gonna help us be a great district. So these are some very significant things we're doing and planning on. What we put in that plan is gonna be, you know, kind of our roadmap for the future, for the next five years, and I can't be more excited. So this is really a historical time for our district, and I think you're gonna see some great things come out of this entire plan. So thank you for being a part of that. Our dashboard, COVID dashboard, again, we're trying to be as transparent as we can. I do want to say this, talking to our epidemiologists, Kenna Foster, just to put everybody on notice that, you know, we're hearing from all the news channels and all that about kind of the latent indicator of Thanksgiving and how we may see an uptick in cases. And, you know, we're sticking to our protocols and everything we can do, but there's a lot of things we can't control, when people go on vacation, when people travel, all the stuff you hear. So we're monitoring that very closely, and, you know, we'll keep you informed on that. But, you know, it is gonna be a challenge possibly in some of our schools, so I just want to make sure you're aware of that. And finally, just a little bit of pride, I think, you know, statewide, we've got some notoriety about some things we've done here, and today I had the honor to actually speak to all of the new superintendents in the state of Florida. They had their first meeting together.
Woo-hoo!
And myself and three other superintendents kind of gave them some information about being instructional leaders and what they need to do, and, you know, we talked about our, improving our graduation rate, our novice teacher mentor program, you know, sustaining those teachers, and I had a number of them ask, well, how'd you do all that? And what are y'all doing, you know? So I think there's a lot of curiosity about what's going on here in Putnam County statewide, and we're getting a lot of questions from, especially the new superintendents. But I haven't actually counted them, but there has been, had to be at least 25 to 30 brand-new superintendents.
I saw that.
There's a lot of them. And so it's good to be able to share what we're doing and to see other districts kind of coming along, and those people have a lot to do, you know?
So you got to tell your brother how to do things?
Yeah, that was kind of neat. I've been listening to him for a long time, so I got to.
Yeah, now he's gonna listen to you.
Yeah, he just got to let you know, so that was kind of neat. Hadn't been able to tell him how to do anything for a long time, so.
Ever. Well, telling my son, congratulations for being the oldest school superintendent in the state of Florida.
That's for sure.
Which he's not, but.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Okay, does anybody have anything? Okay, if not, this meeting is adjourned.